clergy, community leaders, and town staff for making this possible. My name is Jimmy Stalons and I have the privilege of serving as your mayor. Beside me is Mayor Pro Tem Elton Bond, Town Manager Corey Gooden, and Police Chief Henry King, and all the rest of the council members, which consists of Roger Coleman, Aaron Costin, Craig Miller, and Tack Me Hightower. I also want to thank each of you, citizens of Eaton, for being here tonight as we come together as a community to discuss the realities of recent tragedies that our town has experienced over the last two weeks. Most importantly, I want to encourage everyone that we learn from these acts of violence and come together to reflect and provide comfort to one another. This is a time of greenery for so many citizens. However, we will need to look to one another to search for the solutions to end this unwarranted violence in this place that we call home. Please keep in mind, although emotions are probably high, this meeting is to be a positive look forward to help provide solutions to the problem that we will overcome. This is not a time for finger pointing or to criticize our police and our administration. That type of comment will not be helpful to this conversation. Again, thank you for being here. And I would call on Pastor John Shannon, pastor of Providence Baptist Church, to lead us in the implication. Pastor Shannon?
Let us bow our heads and pray. Eternal words of God in heaven. We do thank you for another day, God, you have blessed us this season. We thank you, Lord, for another privilege and an opportunity, God, to just be able to move around. We thank you, God, for this opportunity for a community to come from the different various sections of this little hamlet called Eaton. As we come, oh God, with intentionality, oh God, to speak to an issue, this touch at the hearts of all of us has gathered. We thank you, God, for the leaders of our town. We thank you, God, for pastors down there for opening the doors of their facility that we might come together, oh God, to discuss what needs to be discussed concerning the constituents of this town called Eaton. You've been good to us, God, you've been kind, and Lord, we're thankful. We're calling on you, God, because we know no other to call on in times like these. We acknowledge you as the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. God, you blessed it. We ask God that you would touch us, oh God, which you already touched us with your hand, but we ask God that you would put your finger on somebody tonight that we might come up, God, with a good idea that would help this community. God, we're living in times, God, where we're able to put men on the moon. We're able, oh God, to build submarine that can dive deep. We're able, oh God, to build surface ship that can go around the world without having to refuel. But we have problems, God, right in our neighborhoods, one neighborhood left and the other. God, we have problems in our communities, God, where people just seem to not have any value to life. We ask God that you allow us to come together, oh God, only as you can. We, God, we seen you, God, when people couldn't see, people couldn't hear. You worked miracles and you fixed it for them. You did it way back, God, we know that you can do it again. We ask for God that you go with us, stand by us, oh God, and keep us only as you can. That was, oh God, to grab a hold of the king, the dream the king had, that we might continue to move, not just this community forward, that maybe, God, this community can be an example to the communities all around us, that we might be made that much better. These things happen, God, when people are shot. There's a problem with the shooter, there's a problem with the victim, and there's a problem with people all around us. These things used to happen in big cities, but now, God, they're happening right in our communities. And we need to be about our Father's business. Go with us, God, stand by us, and keep us only as you can. In Jesus' name we pray, the people, God, say amen.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call forward the Eaton Police Department, Chaplin Downe.
Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
And thank you for coming to this special call meeting. To manager Gooden, to the mayor, to, I probably need a mic. To the local city government, to the staff, and to the community. Thank you so much for being here. I'm just here to welcome you and take care of a few household things. We have people on staff who're standing around. If you need to use the bathrooms, it's right here to your right. A staff member is here. You go out this door and make a quick right, and you're right there to the bathrooms. We're so glad that you are here tonight, and we're thankful. Many of us have heard about the death of Nari school. We were sad about it, we were hurt. So tonight, we've come together to come about a solution, something that we can do, some way that we can help. We didn't come, as he said, as he prayed, to point fingers. We came to come with a solution. You know, the Bible says that every good and perfect gift comes from God, comes down from him from above. We know that these deaths were not good, nor were they perfect. And because that means that they didn't come from God. So if it didn't come from God, we know where it came from. And if it came from there, we're not going to just be able to take care of it on a natural realm, but we are also going to have to take care of it on a spiritual realm. The Bible says where there is unity, there is strength. So when we come together tonight in unity, there is going to be strength. And he also says that when we come together and gather together, God has commanded a blessing. So tonight, while we're here trying to take care of this problem, just remember that in our space tonight, that God himself has commanded a blessing.
Thank you, Mayor, Pastor Shannon, Chaplin Downe, for those passionate and very needed words. I want to also thank the town of Eaton Council for continuing to believe in me as your manager and providing me with the leadership and oversight to manage this town and all of its departments. I want to personally thank the residents for keeping our town special and reminding us that when there's a need to correct or improve how we function, tonight is the perfect example of how the combination of both of those efforts. I'm very privileged tonight to introduce our speaker, but before I do that, I want to share a couple items for us to consider when we look back over the past few years. Since 2017, the town of Eaton's mayor and council have been very proactive in its approach and have taken the first major step in the addition of a new police station at 301 North Oakham Street. Shortly after completing that milestone, the administration was faced with the next newest hurdle with the retirement of former police chief Jay Fortenberry. Once again, the administration responded quickly and secured our next police chief, Henry King. Almost immediately, Chief King began to lead his officers by establishing the importance of training for all officers, including himself, the importance of using new technology to aid in investigations, and the development of mindset that even criminals have rights. Since this time, Chief has sustained our department in the shadows of COVID and during a national wide questioning of police tactics. Chief King has fazed and adapted to these challenges, continued to push forward and improve law enforcement relationships locally, statewide, and on a federal level. Tonight, I am very honored to introduce Chief Henry King and to hear more of an update from his department. Chief King?
Well, thank you very much, everyone. Before I get started, I want to make sure everyone in this room, everyone, if you don't have one, please go get one. I want everybody to have this circle. I'm going to explain to you what this is. So please, if you didn't pick one up, if you have it, just let me know if you don't have this one in the back. I want you to have this. I'm going to talk about it tonight. And I want you to have, just like Pastor said, I want you to have a plan. You take the time tonight when you go home. I'm not going to read everything until you, I'm going to hit insert something tonight, but you take the time to read this plan. And if you honor this plan, and if you stick with this plan throughout the year, next year, and years to come, we will change Eaton. Because it's written in stone, just like in the Bible. This plan is written in stone, and together, we can make a difference and change Eaton in North Carolina. So, I want to start off by saying this. As your police chief, I am saddened and sad that we had these shootings occur in town. Because I live here, my son lives here, my wife lives here. We travel up the same road, Dr. Martin King Avenue, where these incidents have occurred. So I fear for my family just like you fear for yours. I want this changed. The lady that was shot this last week, is the same age as my mother. That hits home with me. So I want you to know that no, we don't tolerate this. But the situation that I want to speak to everybody in this room is perception versus reality. Perception versus reality. For some reason, the citizens believe that nothing happens in Eaton, and that is not the truth. That is not, that is far from the truth. If your wife asks you to buy her a Littleton pocketbook, and it costs $2,000, but you only got $500 in your bank account, can you buy that pocketbook?
No.
No. Where I went all the way back to 2015, but tonight, I'm going to talk about 2017 up until now. Back in 2017, Eaton had 20 shooters. 20 shooters in Eaton. Back in 2018, Eaton experienced 11 shooters. Back in 2019, Eaton experienced only two shooters. One of them being a murder at White Castle on Badham Road. And guess what? We was able to solve that murder because the individual stepped up and did what they exposed it to, and talked to the police, the SBI. We were able to get a conviction in court on that murder. In 2020, we experienced 32 shooters in Eaton. During that time, we started utilizing the technology that My Town Manager is explaining to you, where we started getting individuals prosecuted in federal court. Six individuals from this town went federal. We started using NIB, we started calling ATF, we called everybody that we came. We phoned every friend that we could phone. It happened in Eaton, 32 shooters. 2021, we had 19. With one of them being a murder on Combaris Street. And again, because of technology and a citizen doing the right thing, we were able to put those two individuals in jail, away to prosecutions. They haven't been in court yet, but they're still in jail pending prosecution. 2022, we had 12. And yes, we started off the year already in the middle of February with seven. So again, perception versus reality. Now, everyone in this room, I'm not going to play with anyone's intelligence, but the CDC has said that gun violence, not AIDS, not the COVID, gun violence is epidemic in United States of America. And it's ranging between ages of 18 to 28 of young black nails from our community. These issues that we're having in our community is because somebody from the east side don't like somebody from the west side. Somebody made a video, taunting the other side of Eaton video, and then all of a sudden, instead of having a sit-down conflict resolution or going to your local pastor and talking it out, they just had to pick up a gun and go shoot somebody's house, or go shoot the individual. So tonight, what I want to talk about is this circle that I got from Mr. Cole Jackson. I don't know if she's here tonight, but I want to talk about this circle in two phases. If you look at the circle, it talks about our youth in the middle. That's where it starts at, our youth. And then you look at it, it talks about the youth's family. It starts at home. I'm not at home with your kids. I'm at home with my kids. I can only influence my son the best in my ability, because we all know the saying that we can't say what our child won't do when ain't around us. But we can raise our child the best of our abilities. The next step is other natural supports, neighborhoods, community volunteers. Everyone in this room, help raise your child, take some buildings, it's in the Bible. Churches, faith-based, community supporters, social service, public schools, councils, juvenile services, probation. And then, as you can see, when it's finally next to the law enforcement, they have had all the chance that they needed. And then we're going to deal with them the way we should deal with them. And nobody should be upset because they had ample time to fix the problem. That's what it takes from our town. Now, for these individuals running around here that's wrong, that shooting up stuff, we got a whole different committee for them. And the committee I would like to have is myself, Sherrod Bassnight, Dwayne Goodwin, our criminal courts, probation parole, and our ADA, Alexis Massagill, to sit down in a group monthly, identify the top 10 individuals of Eaton, send them target letters to let them know that you have been identified as a problem in this community. And if you do anything wrong, we're going to make sure that we prosecute you to the fullest, to where it's, we want, no plea deals, we want all or nothing. And that's what it's going to take. But it's also going to take, for the community, when you see these videos that they're posting, because I don't have NYPD staff, where I have crime analysts that's out here on different websites every night taking this thing. But when you see these videos and you see them targeting other individuals, call us. Tell us about it. Because I guarantee you, we're going to go see them, and we're going to go see the people that they were targeting to let them know that we saw the video, you're on notice, and you're on notice. But we need your help. Every case that we have worked, that we have got individuals arrested for, either it was video, or my officer stopped the car for a tag right there. We smeared marijuana in the car, and we got a gun off a convicted felon. Now, I'm talking about the ABC store shooting that happened in 2020. I'm sure most people in this room remember that shooting. Well, I don't want to share with you the shooting because it's over with now, and it's been convicted in court. When that happened, had the ABC store not had cameras, my police department would have never solved that case. I can tell you why. Because when the individual left from the ABC store, they went to their house. Then that same car came to my police department and tried to report the shooting at the ABC store, but the person that tried to report it wasn't in the vehicle. But because we had cameras at the ABC store and on Johnson Street, we were able to put the pieces of the puzzle together. And the reason why I say that they didn't have cameras, because in any investigation, if you're on camera, whether you're a witness or the suspect, we have to interview everybody, correct? Well, we went to go interview an individual that we saw in the ABC store, Brian Crown Rule. That's how, I know his name, Brian Crown Rule, paid with his credit card. When me and the ATF went to go interview the individual, he said, "That wasn't me." I said, "What?" He said, "That wasn't me." I said, "That's not me." I said, "Well, they used your credit card." That was, well, somebody must have used my credit card. I don't know who used my credit card. The mentality of not wanting to get involved needs to stop. The mentality of worrying about somebody calling you a snitch needs to stop. Because if it don't stop, all we are doing by not telling is empowering these individuals more and more. It's got to stop, and it needs to end today. You need to talk to your kids, your grandkids, your friends. It is time to tell. Now, I tell the council right here all the time, I say it to them, they'll tell you. They have a strong initiative, they want a crime-free community. I met my staff and I, we worked very hard to complete that. But I must be honest with myself all the time. If you live in a town or a city that's crime-free, let me know. I want to move there. Because everywhere has crime, and our place is no different. But we work hard, but we need the community's help. And we're getting it. For some reason, if we post on Facebook, we're looking for an individual that goes through the general, oh, our emails are flooded. That's who this person is, this other person is. Well, let's do the same thing for these shooters. Because I know these individuals were out there the night of the homicide and saw what happened. I know that. But instead, we were told, get the F out their yard, get the F out their face, and go do our F-ing job. That's exactly what we was told at the scene. Not only my staff, SBI agents from all over that are trying to come down here and help us. And this is how we treat people, and we're trying to help people. And we can continue to help people, and we're going to continue to investigate the case in other cases. But this is what we're getting, in real time. So what I'm asking the community to do tonight is to read that plan. Let's stick with this plan, let's get the individuals involved monthly, let's meet, let's get the individuals identified, and let's not feel sad for them if they wind up messing up, and they don't mess up anymore this week. I believe in second and third chance, because my data always tells me, because he's a pastor, every saint has a past, and every sinner has a future. I believe that. I truly believe that. But you're not going to keep shooting up our town, I promise you that. But I need the community's help. Now, as a police chief, whatever comments come tonight, I'm going to take right now. I'm willing to take it. But at the end of the night, all I want from the citizens of Eaton is to go out and read and tell your grandchildren, your sons, your nephews, you know that Ray Ray out here doing bad. Correct, Ray Ray? You know that. Stop turning a blind eye. Be the mother and the father and the aunt and the cousins that's going to say, you know what, if you don't want to lead your life right, and I know you out here in these streets, I'm going to help the police lock you up. I try to help you get a job, regulate the Marina, Jingle Jumbo's hide every day. You don't want to get a job, then I'm going to help the police lock you up. So all I'm asking is for us to pull together. I expect this room to be more packed tonight. Because I really want our community to understand that we could do it if we work together. Now, I will tell you this. If you can afford it, because I know time is a tough, food is high, eggs is $9 for a dozen, but if you can afford it, everybody in Eaton needs to purchase some type of video surveillance for their homes, pointed towards your house, out towards the streets. Because there's so many times that it's something like that that helps us make a difference in the case. Share it with the police department. We're not asking you to get, that we want to see inside your house. Just be willing to share it. Email us and say, hey, I just got a new Blink system, or I got a new wise, I got whatever. It's pointing towards the streets, pointing towards my driveway. If something happens in the 500 block of whatever road, give a Gilson call. We happy to share it. Please do that, it makes a difference. But at the same time, I want to give you a realistic answer. The ABC store had cameras. Did it stop that shooting? No, it did not. People had alarms in their house. Had it stopped people from still breaking in your house? No, it does not. But it's a tool that can help bring this individual to justice. But the best thing, better than any camera or anything else, is a nosy neighbor. A nosy neighbor. If you can be a nosy neighbor, you can be the best friend in the world. Tell you what time they leave, what car they got in, what they were dressed, who they was with. So I'm not going to prolong this, but I really want everybody to study that plan and be impactful. You know, I see the know your neighbors over here. I'm going to use them for an example. They came to me, and they came to the town, and they took it under a neighborhood meeting, and they was doing a whole lot in the community. And all of a sudden, people stopped coming. Things were going, things were going good, it was quiet. It was, it was quiet. Dad was right back showing it, it was quiet, and people just faded off. We can't afford, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, to start this. Six months later, eight months later, we hadn't had anything because Dad showed it, we can go up and down, and then everybody fixes off. We got to be continuously, just like we live every day. Nothing changes. We got to send a message to anybody. If you come to Eaton and you mess up, and I see you, you're going to get locked up. I'm going to be in court. If you are a, if you are someone that owns a business, and your subordinate is a witness to a crime, you got to work with him at work. Because we know how the court system works, not their fault. They go there, they get a continuance. They come back, they ask if they want to hire an attorney or get a court-appointed attorney. So they got a second continuance. Then they decide to get a court-appointed attorney or hire one. They going to get a third continuance. Then the fourth time, the lawyer has a superior court case, so they'll get a fifth continuance. Be patient with your employees. Allow them to go to court so we can get the individuals out of our community. Support them when they have to go to court. I digress, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Chief. You did a great job, I appreciate it. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the council remarks, if any of you here want to make.
Chief, I just want to say, I want to thank you for your leadership and direction that you brought to Eaton Police Department during the past five years. And I will speak for myself, and I also speak with the rest of the council. We definitely endorse and support you and the department. Anything we can do to further continue your efforts in improving the police department, we are here for you. Just have a question. Do you think you need more security cameras in town?
Counselor Miller, I would never turn down more cameras in town. The more cameras in town, the better. However, I just want to be clear to the citizens, and again, cameras does not deter crime from happening. But most times, when people know that they're on camera, they cannot commit crimes. We do know that. But yes, sir, if more cameras, I would never turn them down at all, sir.
One more question. Do you have, do you feel you have adequate police staff?
Well, I hear in the crowd they say no. I have 16 on staff. And I have three in field training. They'll be out trained in May, they'll be riding by themselves. And I have two older ones. Now, 18 men, or 18 minutes slash women, is enough to police Eaton. But however, if I were to add three or four more to my police department, that would give me individuals that directly work nothing but drugs and gangs. Because right now, we do everything. And I don't have specialized unit, I don't have this and that. So yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. I think we can all agree that the town has worked very hard to make resources available to you and the police department to try and keep our social safe. I'd like to raise this issue. And looking at some of the statistics about our town, University of North Carolina has put out a report that shows that we have 168 young people who live in Eaton who are neither in school nor working, between the ages of 16 and 24. 168 young people, 16 to 24, not in school and not working. It seems to me, until we can begin to more adequately address the needs of that group, we will continue to have violence in our community. Because while some of these young people might be doing very positive things, if you're not doing anything, the chances of ending up in trouble are a lot larger. So my question is, how do we begin to make a transition in our community between retention and moving toward prevention? 168 young people, I think, are asking that question.
Counselor Cole, that's a good question. And it goes back to what I mentioned earlier about the CDC said a gun epidemic is a crisis. Just last night, there were four young black males shot. In the sister parenthood, we have time to run here, but that sister parenthood is Walrus Landing. 16, 17, 20, and 21 years old. That was listed as it last night, about 7 o'clock, 7 o'clock last night. So what we're looking at, again, going back to the circle to answer your question. The law says you can talk about a school that's 16, but somewhere, the system failed. When I say the system, I'm talking about home, parents, church, school, the whole gamut. And I don't know what that answer is as far as how can we in Eaton, except for come together, identify individuals, utilize the programs and resources that we have to bring these individuals back into the fold to do much right. But we have to stay on topic, and we have to work together. Which means, we have to meet regularly, we have to have pastors and clergy that's willing to open up their doors mentor. We have to have people that's willing to come and teach these kids. Because some of them probably were struggling at school, and they dropped out of school because they couldn't afford it to them. There's so many variations or scenarios, and reasons why they went from 16 to 24 not doing the thing. There's so many variations or scenarios, and reason why they went from sixteen to twenty-four not doing the thing. And that's me as an individual, we need a lot of psychologists, uh, psychologists that are in here examining our kids. Because we don't live in that environment. Now, I'll mention this. Eaton is five square miles. Five square miles. Okay, five square miles, ladies and gentlemen. But, but I, I told you about those shootings earlier? And I listened, I mean, I told you how many that we had per year? They all, they all generated within that one square mile of Eaton. The same locations. It's one square mile. But to get back to your question, Counselor COVID, I don't have the answer to that, but it takes doctors, um, social workers, clergy, individuals willing to come in there and see why we can keep these kids from dropping out of school from, at the age of sixteen.
First and most importantly, I would like to thank everyone that's here tonight. Uh, to me, if you're here, that is a sign that you're concerned, and if you're concerned, that means you care. And if you don't care, there's no way, and if we don't care, there's no way that we're gonna solve this problem. So I would like to thank you for your community presence here tonight. I think it speaks volumes that we do have people in this community that care about this problem. Uh, one thing that I would like to encourage everyone to do, and I've gotten several emails over the last two weeks that have done just this. Um, we don't have all, all the answers. Uh, we don't claim to have all the answers. In fact, we're just as frustrated as you are that we don't have enough answers to this problem. So if you have any ideas, uh, no matter how simple, or if you think it's a silly idea, please pass that along to us, and it might be something that we've not thought of. So by your participation tonight, I'd like to invite you to further participate. And if you have that idea, please pass it along, and I promise you, we will listen.
Uh, a lot of people don't believe it, but we've got an outstanding chief of police here in Eaton. He's done an outstanding job. A lot of new technology. He's asked the town to give from it. We've got it. When a shot is fired, he don't have to wait for anyone to call him to let it do it was fired. The technology will let him know where the shot was fired from, and all these cameras we've got. He's doing a tremendous job, but like the chief said, he needs to help us community. If anything happens in your community and you know about it, you need to let him know. Because we need to get those people off the street. We need safe streets, safe communities in Eaton. Because it's no fun going at home when the sun go down and locking your house up. Even though, like you said, you got cameras and alarms and all this. A burglar told me one time, there's no burglar alarm that he can't get by. There's no security camera that he can't get by. He said, you put them out there for folks that wants, who are thinking about breaking in, but for a thief, he can get by. And he proved it to them. It's true. It's true. So let's come together as a town, as communities, as individuals, and work with the police department and try to solve this problem that we've got. Because we've got a great problem here in Eaton of all this shooting going on, people getting killed, folks scared. Eaton is a sweet little town, and we need to keep it sweet and get rid of all this crime and stuff. Thank you, Chief.
Chief, I have two questions, but one really. Um, some of the initiatives that were highlighted here for us, I have a question about. Um, so, so the technology that we purchased, versus the, uh, security cameras and the shots fired system and the license plate reader. Could you, uh, inform the public on the success of that, or, you know, if there's additional that you're needing, you can tell us why and where?
Okay, so, then attacking your first question. So your first question is, explain to the public about this, uh, acoustic threat detection software, license plate readers and the cameras, correct?
Right.
Okay. Well, the first purchase that we had was the acoustic threat detection, what backup. The town had cameras, and the cam, and we added more cameras, and the cameras paid off. The cameras, um, when, when we had incidents happen, being these, breaking the enter, excuse me, or hit runs or accidents, um, when, when both parties said they, they had the red light, the cameras helped out. The acoustic threat detection, what they did, especially with Eaton being underwater, was, one, when someone fired a gun, you could be downtown and you think it was coming from Westover, but it's actually coming from Oakland Street. So, so before we got the software, we were going somewhere else, and we would never find anything. And the people in, in, in that particular neighborhood wasn't calling because they were subject so much to gunfire that they didn't even call a second nature. So that caused us to be able to go to the right location and investigate, collect the shell cases like we supposed to, and further investigate the shooting. On top of that, the acoustic threat detection allowed us to be able to turn the camera towards the gunshots. So Halloween of last year, we had a shooting right by the police department. Arrested two individuals for less than twenty-four hours because of the software. But we all know in America that everything that's good for you is expensive, and everything that's bad for you is cheap. Baloney is nine dollars to the pound, but turkey is three dollars a pound. So unfortunately, when you wanna have technology, it's expensive. Now, that's something that we can all write Washington DC for. All this technology that can help communities throughout the country costs so much money. And what's your last question?
Um, I guess it's a setup that we've had within the town. Uh, especially in light of what's been placed two weeks ago.
Yes, we have great success with it. We're feeling the trial phase in with license plate readers. But since we had license plate readers, we have found stolen vehicles. We, uh, today we had a hit and run, and we were able to tell exactly the vehicle that committed the hit and run because it went through the license plate reader. So having that technology is, again, is a plus.
All right, thank you, Chief. Uh, at this time, we'll, uh, Pastor Corey Gooden, our city manager, could make some comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Um, just a couple things here in closing before we open up to the general public. Um, we do have a list here, um, for public comment. But I wanna share a few things. You know, we've, we've spoken about, um, where we have came from since 2017, how our town has transitioned, um, its police department, as well as the officers and the technology that we have used. Um, and we've also talked about how our community has changed in many ways. Um, um, some for the better, some for the worse. Um, but one thing I want to share is, is, is we talk about some of the next steps. So what do we do going forward, um, to enhance this? Um, you know, in light of the last three weeks, um, they've been very taxing on Chief and myself, as well as the residents and, and this entire council. Um, one of the things we've been working on is we've been trying to find what is the opportunity for us to move forward. Um, we do see that there's some additional staffing needs that Chief and I have spoken about. We've already had those discussions with Mayor. Um, you know, we're, we're in that, 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 that real sweet spot for us when we talk about, um, our budget plan, as far as what we need going forward. Um, over the last year and a half, I think Council has supported us very much where we've identified gaps. I think that's gonna continue. Uh, we talked about this crime animals position. That's very real. That's something we're very much interested in. Uh, most recently, um, the town has decided to, to look into a public information officer. That's really to help us with, with being transparent with the community, to provide updates on what all of our departments are doing, including the, uh, police department, as well as any relevant items, um, like the, the newsletters that, that most of the residents are seeing now of what council's doing. You know, we really want to, to open our doors and really show, um, everything that we're trying to improve. Um, we've also considered additional technology. You know, there's, there's a lot of technology there. Um, we have already received additional quotes for additional cameras, as well as additional tag rooms. Um, we use data to really drive how we do things. You know, my background is an engineer, and I can see the value in that. And Chief, from a statistics level on what we found, uh, we continue to use data, um, even for policing. Um, you commonly find data used in public works or the electric department, but we're finding that, um, the crime statistics that we have, um, shows us where these new tools, um, shall be. We're gonna provide some updates for opportunities that potential nonprofits and, and organizations within our community can better assist us. Uh, we, you know, in light of everything that we've found, we've been working with our, with our ACOM, uh, acoustic detection vendors, and they've identified grant funding for nonprofits here to build the system and reimburse these, these, um, uh, churches, um, any other nonprofits that we have in town to further strengthen our community. We're gonna share that information. We are searching for groups now who would be interested in making a financial commitment to help with the idea that there's gonna be reimbursement on the back top, back side. That's gonna take a little bit of time. Um, we've also met, um, within the last two weeks with other agencies. Um, I think Chief's idea, uh, for a, a regional task force is something that we're considering. But we're gonna start that here in Chauan County, um, with our sheriff's department, with the Eaton PD. But we gotta think about, um, you know, really the region that we're looking at. We talked about Washington County, um, that had one homicide, but then that ten day, uh, uh, ten day window, those ten different, uh, shootings. Um, one in Bertie, um, three here in Eaton, two in Chauan County, and two in Hartford. Of those nine, the biggest thing that we found was every one of the crimes that occurred that had the public's input, there's been a successful. And so once again, in closing, I really wanna urge this community to come together. We do everything we can to try to support this community, and we expect that back. That's a two-way street. So we're gonna open up tonight for public comment. I just wanna share a couple things. Just please remember, um, we'll try to answer any questions that we have. If we cannot answer that question tonight, we will take the time to respond to you directly and try to provide the correct follow-up. If we don't have the answer, we're gonna say that. That's, that's only fair. That's only transparent. And also, once again, just to reiterate this, this is the time for this group to come together to, to bring us solutions. This is not the time to ostracize this group, this department, um, because I stand behind my chief and this mayor and this council, and, um, I think we're heading in the right direction.
Thank you, Corey. That's very inspiring, very noteworthy here. Okay, at this time, we'll open it up the floor for public comment. And the first one on the list is Marion Jackson.
Good afternoon, everyone. I stand before you as a citizen of Eaton, North Carolina for forty-three years. But I also stand before you as a victim of this gun violence that's been plaguing our city. I have points out tonight, but this, too discussed tonight. However, I'm gonna have to request a private meeting with you all. Because what I've learned through my eight years of college, standing here as a master's level professional, in order to get the solutions, you got to be able to address the issues at hand. One question I do have, on the night of the shooting, apparently the cameras, I heard Mr. Miller asked about more cameras, um, going up the town. I was shown that night at my niece's house, where the youngest victim was seven months old. A seven-year-old called 911. She hung up with 911 and immediately called me. That haunts me to this day, knowing already what I have been through as a victim of gun violence, trusting God and thanking God for saving my daughter, in which if the bullet hadn't have fallen, I would have lost her to this senseless gun violence in this town. I have been an advocate. I have been a fighter. I have been a reporter of incidents. Things sent, picked up on camera, faces picked up on camera. Nothing has been done. That night of that shooting on, at Westwood Apartments, again, the youngest victim, you guys, seven months old. I was shown that the cameras on that side of town were offline. Why do we need more cameras if we can't even have the cameras that we have now working and operating in our communities to keep us safe? Why are we continuing to spend taxpayers' money to get this equipment where it's not even operable? It's not running. I was physically shown that night. But I will be sending an email and requesting a private meeting with all of you to discuss concerns. Because again, in order to get the resolutions, we got to be able to address the issues at hand.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. So Ms. Jackson, let me answer your question. So that night, I did show you that the cameras were not working, because we're always gonna be transparent here at the Eaton Police Department. But I want you to know that that camera that was not working was not paid for by the taxpayers of the town of Eaton. That camera that was on that pole in Westwood Apartments was owned by Westwood Apartments, and they share it with the town of Eaton, just like the cameras that are in the housing authority were owned by housing authority, but they were so racist enough to share it with the town of Eaton and Eaton Police Department. Now, I knew and have been talking with Westwood Apartments about their cameras and following up with them weekly and Monday. Just, just the other day, because the camera's still down, just the other day, I called the IT guy myself and say, hey, sir, what is going on with the cameras in Westwood and West? He says, they've been given a quote. Is that words? They've been given a quote. Now, I don't know what their financial, you know, um, situation is, or the checkbook is, but I don't, I don't, I don't want you to think that the, the cameras that the town of Eaton owns, that the town of Eaton, that the tax dollars spent, if they go down, which they are, because we all know about technology, we get those up and running as soon as possible. But I cannot control a third party's camera. It'll not go by the town, but we have access to them. So I hope that answers your question.
Chief, one question for you, uh, as it relates to our concern. The cameras that are close to that location, I think we do have a couple right there. Were they operable that night as well?
We only had one camera down the street, which is at MLK and Cox Avenue, and it was operable. But it is, but obviously where the apartment is at, it's not gonna catch anything, because it pans. But yes, MLK and Cox Avenue were very operable. But the Westwood Apartment camera, which is owned by Westwood, was not operable. And it has been down. And I shared that with Ms. Jackson and the family that night.
So Chief, I got a question. So is the area that we're talking about, is that in that one square mile area that we, that we, that we're talking about?
Absolutely, uh, Pastor. Uh, anything on MLK, uh, North Motor, the 300 block of North Motor Street, uh, West, uh, West Carter Road Street, First and Johnson, it's all in, in, within one square mile.
Chief, um, if we can find the funding for it, and I tend to think that we're motivated to find the funding for it, um, can we place more cameras in these hotspot areas that you told us about?
Absolutely. Um, I, I don't know, um, Counselor Hyde, if this is even, uh, even legal. And I wanted to do it, but I wanted to ask Attorney Hood, since Westwood was kind of, uh, I don't wanna say dragging the feet, but whatever's going on with the camera, I wanted to replace the camera with us based on their property. But yes, we can add more cameras to the other different hotspots, because we are a utility company, and we, we, we own the post. and we, we, we own the poles. So, yes, we can add more. But Westwood was one of the places where, again, Westwood, Waterford, statistics, we were having problems with it. Tyler Run, we were having problems. But guess what happened at Tyler Run? They got, uh, new management, they invested in the best, uh, camera system you could ever think of, and they started putting people out who didn't want to follow the rules, and boom, the problem was gone. When Battle Road White Castle got a new owner and he set the tone out there, he put people out and he invested in his own camera that he shared with the police department, boom, we stopped going out there. It, again, it takes some diligence, takes good management, but we have to hold people accountable. And I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson, I'm sorry that camera wasn't working that night, I knew about it, but I can't control others' access.
Chief, it might be noteworthy to say that, you know, we're looking into, we're pricing to buy ten more cameras at this, at this town. And Ms. Jackson, one extra thing to add here that we haven't shared, um, you know, these cameras and these shot protection acoustic sensors that we have, these are thirteen thousand dollars apiece. So, the reason I say that is if we know that's a, that is a hard ask for us to approach, you know, nonprofits or when we expand, I mean, ten of those, that's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, one option that I wanted to share with the public tonight, the chief and I have had some, um, um, very early on conversations is there is a software system that we have found, regardless of the camera system that these properties may have, that may be a, a lot more financially responsible for them to have something that's a, a, a little more, uh, you know, priced where, where they can afford those. So, we're actually looking into this future system. And we're going to encourage these, um, these complexes as well as these businesses because this new software will allow us to basically expand with the existing camera system that these locations have, and they are integrated as part of our camera system. So, we would know more quickly when Wedgewood or when Tyler Run would have camera systems down. And this is, is, is not something that we're asking them to buy. This would be a subscription base that we would basically absorb what they have. Yes, ma'am?
So, I have a question, we're talking about the cameras. The shot, what'd you say, the shot protect, detectives, were they not working that, are any on that side of town as well?
Yes, we, we, we received the alert. We go on Texas Street, we received the alert. We've been around, but the camera, the cam, the sh, the shot, the sensor turns the camera in the direction of the shots. But the camera, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I just, yeah, I, I asked a question for a reason, but I guess we're not to address concerns tonight for a town hall that was called for us to be able to discuss this and come up with solutions. So, that's why I'm going to ask for a meeting with you all, like, uh, the Sheriff's Department and the county commissioners did give, afford me the opportunity to meet and discuss concerns with them. So, I'm going to ask the same with you guys, but I do that in the email. But, um, I just wanted to ask about those as well because unfortunately, even during that situation, I was able to come from the county and meet the officers that I was, so I was concerned.
Yes, ma'am.
That's my link up.
And, and, and I'm not going to make an excuse, but we were real, literally at a, at a homicide scene. So, that's what took me, because I wanted to make sure that they, that they did everything they're supposed to do over there, and I was in route. So, yes, ma'am, it was delayed because I wanted to make sure that everything was wrapped up or not wrapped up, but everything was, that my supervisor was supervising, everyone corrected before we went to the next thing.
So, with that being said, I would say, and I think somebody touched on that earlier, maybe more officers aren't even making, because we, we did shake our head in the audience when you said, um, somebody says about officers, maybe we need more officers. On duty. Because you shouldn't have individuals having, you know, if you've got a team working on that issue, yes, it was serious, but you also have these other issues happening, which was the, right after that happened. And you have no officers over there to secure that scene. And I, as a citizen, along with my seventy-year-old mother, put ourselves at risk to protect our family and the kids. So, maybe more officers do need to be hired.
And Ms. Jackson, um...
I'll email back.
I would be glad to set that meeting up, and we are looking into what the head councils need to do.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, next on the list is Adrian Heath.
Good evening. Um, thank you for having this community meeting. And it seems to me that in Edenton, it's about the haves and the have-nots, and who's valuable and who isn't. I have requested a camera in the back of where I live, Johnston and Cambaris, because people have told me there's no drug dealings and whatnots around there. I haven't seen a camera yet. Um, we should consider that all lives are valuable in the town, regardless of color, income, or family connections. I just would like to mention that. Also, a, as a teacher, I meet a lot of students who have housing problems. The teenagers have housing problems. They've been kicked out at sixteen, they have nowhere to go, they have no drop-in centers. Maybe the churches can, um, monies can be available to nonprofits and churches to assist homeless youth from sixteen to thirty, I say, who are just couch surfing. Some of my kids don't get enough sleep because too many people are living in their home. There's not enough food in the home. There's someone, mom, who may, or dad, working shift, and no one's available to supervise the children, so they're not learning, they're not doing their homework, they have no books in the house. So, there's a lot of social problems in this town, uh, but recreation can maybe help with that. Um, training skills for youth, mentorships, the well-off people in the community who are ready to, let's punish those black males, maybe they could mentor those black males through the high school or some kind of church program, so they can learn to read and, uh, have skills so that can contribute to the community. Uh, we should reach out instead of just complaining about black-on-black crime. We should maybe reach out beyond our tribe and help each other to build a community. Also, as I said, education volunteers. Uh, we need symbols of positivity of all histories in the town. If you've been told all your life that you're a slave, you're from slave, you'll be nothing, you'll do nothing, and nothing is in your education program that puts positive spins on who you are and what you come from, then you may develop some psychological and trauma issues. That's not for the town to fix, but maybe we need some mental health, um, you know, nonprofits who need some funding. Also, um, we need more positive symbols of positive histories of all people in Edenton and remove those symbols that are not positive or that have gun aggression at, in the center of town and things like that. Why should you tell black males that they can't have a gun, but you've got this big statue with a white man with a gun downtown? Anyway, uh, what about gun laws? I'll end with that. What can we do locally about gun laws to control the sales of guns through people who sell it, you know, to each other and/or on the internet or at gun shows? Thank you.
Ms. Heath, just to respond to a couple of things, um, you are correct about the recreation. And then we'll share this, um, when we talk about what councils consider, um, when, when allocating the American Relief Plan, um, funds for this second round. Um, and just to share with the general public while we're here, um, council did decide to set aside over five hundred thousand dollars specifically towards recreation. And we're hoping that that will, will really push a positive impact on these kids' lives.
More than just a basketball court?
Yes, ma'am. And also, if we talk about some of the housing, um, there, there are some, um, the funding opportunities available where this council also set aside over a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars towards, um, um, ha, housing initiatives. Um, those were shared back in December and will be voted upon, or were voted upon in January. Um, those would be, if you, if you remember in your newsletter. So, you know, between rehabilitation, um, new housing options, we have partnered with USDA, um, some opportunities to try to improve these. Um, um, you know, we talk about, uh, policing and we talk about safety issues. Um, we have taken a very proactive approach to address some of the, the living conditions. Um, uh, one thing to share with this group is our law enforcement officers are also being trained to address minimum housing issues. Where not only when we go into a house where there may be a, 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 a legal issue there, but also we're focusing on making sure these homes are safe for folks to live in.
Ms. Heath, I want to say this, you hit the nail on the head when it comes to our youth. So, this is where I'm going, I'm going to, as a son of, as a son and grandson of a pastor, this is where I'm going to have and hold my clergy accountable. Because the way I grew up, a church, see, like, church today has been more of a commuter church, not a community church. People go, people go to the church, but they don't live in their community. We got, we got the, the clergy got to stand up, and I know you have, but you got to stand up and serve the community where your church is located at, and those youth. So, if, if the clergy can, can rally together and, again, identify these youths that are not getting sleep because Ms. Heath is right in the school system, she can share with the clergy these individuals' names. The clergy can get together, figure out, this is a small town, most everybody probably related around here. So, we, if you don't know the person, you probably know their friend or their cousin. So, we got to really get involved, and that comes, Ms. Heath, from the community. If those kids are not getting eaten, people are afraid to call social service. Social service doesn't always want to take your kid, but they want to make sure that, that the kids can get a meal. It may be a parenting issue. But we got to utilize the resources that we have and not be afraid and worried about somebody coming to take your child, because we're not always here to arrest somebody, we're also here to help.
Okay, next is, uh, Dr. Darius Horton from Burton.
Good evening, uh, to the mayor, the mayor pro town members of the council, and to the community as a whole. Uh, my name is Darius Horton, I am the senior pastor of White River Baptist Church in Tyner, and I'm also the, uh, funeral director of Horton's Funeral Home and Cremations in Hurford, North Carolina. Um, and I just recently, uh, ended a nine-year tenure on the Elizabeth City Council. Uh, I've come tonight, uh, you know, this is Black History Month, and Dr. King said something so profound that darkness, uh, cannot drive out darkness, only light can. Uh, hate cannot drive out hate, only love can. And what the world needs more today is more love. Um, I came here really, uh, with one main focus. Uh, I've operated and, uh, been the CEO and funeral director at Horton's Funeral Home since two thousand and sixteen. And I would say ninety-five percent of the murders and homicides here in Chawan County at my funeral home has handled those services. And it gives me a different view, a different approach as the individual, the mortician that sees the aftermath of the gun violence, and then the mortician that sits down with these families that are dealing with the fact that their son, their daughter, is never going to walk in that door again. It was just, uh, the past couple of weeks, both the homicides and murders, uh, that have been spoken about tonight, I was the funeral director for both of those families. And sitting there, even as a believer in Christ, and recognizing their pain, their hurt, the questions, have they failed themselves as parents? It's one of the hardest things that anyone can ever do. And I came tonight because, and I really don't have a whole lot of questions, but just points to ponder, one of the things that I would like to see, uh, from the police, and I really believe that even though this is a great starting point, uh, this should have been a community meeting, the county. I know this is a town council meeting, uh, but this is not just a town problem. This is a community problem. The sheriff, uh, the county commissioners, all of us need to come together to come up with creative ways. Um, it's one thing to talk about it, but we have to be about it. And, and I sat with both of those mothers in the past couple of weeks. And one of the things that I constantly hear from these grieving families is that there is a lack of communication between the law enforcement and the families that are dealing with the death of these loved ones. There may be no new evidence, there may be no new suspect, you may not know anything. But there needs to be designated individuals that reach out to these families, even if there's not any new information, to just let them know, hey, we're working hard, uh, you know, we're, we're thanking of you, you know, because a lot of times these families, and this is not a, a tactic in, individual. But a lot of times these families tell the accordion, "We haven't heard anything." You know, "We don't know what's going on, we don't know anything." So, that, that's a problem, and that's something that we, needs to be addressed. Also, you know, I heard earlier, we talked about the east side, the west side, uh, the Bloods, the Crips. You know, we have to work together as leaders to make this one community. There is no side. Uh, the only side should be us working together. And I have a lot of things I would like to say, that I am also the exalted ruler of, uh, the Elks Lodge on Carteret Street, and if our building could be used to host any type of community functions, uh, that we get people out, we would love to do so. Thank you.
Next, John Lister. Mr. Mayor, Council, I want to change the subject. We've, uh, we've talked a lot of our cameras, we've talked about training. Nobody has spoken about poor lighting. We heard that at town council four or six weeks ago, somebody railing about East King Street, from the seventeen sixty-seven courthouse and things there, lighting levels, like, a difference. I saw, I've seen it graphically in many respects. I'll give you one simple example. If you go to the theater, oh, it's COA, Elizabeth City, for, performers there. Good seats, good theater, good acoustics, and the lighting is outstanding. But one of the reasons why the handicaps we have in developing the Chawan campus of COA is support lighting off Oakham Street. That needs to be considered in terms of improving homes, high school, and as ramifications for the totality of the community. You look at Chawan Hospital, murder room at night, officers don't hesitate to go. For reasons, they know the personnel is common, and they know it's lit up, you can see, you can be seen. Lighting enhances the perception of safety. I think we need to pursue that. Thank you. The next on our list is Devil Blank.
Thank you for having me here, thank you. Um, I'm not sure what I have to say, major criteria, so, um, can I ask you a few questions instead of, uh, going forward with this? Um, my daughters, my granddaughters hunted myself in the shooting a few weeks ago. And I'd like to know, um, maybe it is a procedure to gather the bullets that are in the walls? Uh, but I would like to know if it is, and if it is, what wasn't done? I'd also like to know why Colleen Tyer wasn't contacted to get a, a camera? The camera was focused on her house. And as far as I know, and for what she was told, and by the way, her name is Julia Jones, um, she had to reach out to Colleen Tyer herself and make those available to your police department. Personally, and I live in Hurford, you guys are a grateful town. Personally, and I live in Hurford, you guys are a great little town. But if it was me living here, I would be calling for your chief's resignation. As she was blamed and victimized for this, I'm not sure that that is either protocol or understanding from your chief, but I certainly don't appreciate it. So I have some other things I'd like to speak with you guys about, and I'd be glad to sit down with you whenever it's appropriate.
So Ms. Lane, so the Colleen Tyer question is, we did contact them and we did get the video, we had to wait on the individual to get us the video. So we got it, we posted a screenshot of it to ask the public if they knew who that vehicle looked out. Then you had a great conversation. Have it?
It's clearly a Ford Taurus.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that, and we are looking for the Ford Taurus. There are about, there are about 24 Tauruses in Eaton just alone, you know? And DMV doesn't give us the color, it only gives the Ford Taurus. So we're going around narrowing down, which was, it appeared to be a white Ford Taurus, but at nighttime with the light, it could be a different color, but we're trying to narrow it down, we're working on it. And I have spoken to Ms. Jones myself. And just like I spoke to you on the phone and given you the totality of the circumstances.
Well, this is not a time and place to argue with you, and I'm certainly not here to do that. I'm just going on what Julie Clayton said, so there you have it.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your input, and trust me, we have heard your, we've heard some very good comments, and believe me, we have heard. The chief spelled it out, he called it like it is. But what you must understand is, we have a limited amount of personnel and can't be everywhere every minute, which is what some people expect the police to do, they just cannot do it. We need your help. Please, if you see something, say something. Call the police, call somebody. We see it on the news media all the time where if a police officer is present, people have their cameras out filming and hoping to catch the police doing something wrong. That in itself is wrong. Isn't it just as important to catch somebody committing a crime as it is to catch the police making a mistake? Seeing somebody shooting someone, or shooting up a house, or shooting up a car, please, please, guys, ladies and gentlemen, we need your help. We need you to see something and to say something. Your comments will be private, no one will know you have spoke up, it will be confidential. So please, again, if you see something, say something. And again, we appreciate all the comments from up here and from out there.
I've got one more to add to the record before we close. We, I'd like to share this, and I plan on responding to Ms. Jones, Mayor. We did accept one email that came in tonight to ask a question, and I would be glad to follow up, but I'd like to share that with the general public as well. Sorry for that. Thank you for giving me a chance to read this. This is from Ms. Julia Jones, asking that this please be read and addressed at tonight's council meeting. Thank you so much. I come to you today on behalf of myself, my family, and the citizens of Eaton, North Carolina. For years, the Eaton Police Department has been rife with corruption, abuse of power, and impunity. Chief King promised change but has failed on his promises. Chief King has worsened the department's problems by undermining basic mechanisms of accountability and civilian oversight. It is clear he does not represent the values and cannot effectively lead the department. I have recently been a victim of violence, whereas not only am my life in danger, but my children's as well. When the chief was told about this incident from the officers that they were called to the scene, he blamed the incident on me and who I associate with, or who I did not associate with. What kind of chief would victim blame? I tell you, Chief King, the one that has not protected the citizens of our town, the one that sits behind the desk and points fingers, the one that you only see on social media portraying himself as a good fellow. How many murders have gone unsolved in the past few years? How many shootings have gone unsolved in the past few years? What is being done? We as citizens should be informed, we cannot count on the chief of the police. Then who can we count on? I ask for Chief King's immediate resignation, and this is from Mrs. Julia Jones.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we heard you, and this is our.
May I ask a question?
You may.
In reference to the 168 people, children that you were talking about, Roger?
Yeah.
Where did they get, did they get the names of those?
No, not that I know of. They simply just thorough spaced around the state of each county, and it's one, I mean, 68, eight, 16 to 24, now in school and not working it. And if I can get the names for those, it'd be good to be able to justify that 168.
The male or female?
Did I get that breakdown? I haven't got the breakdown, they might have it.
I guess because you're asking, you know, for us to, you know, see something, if you see something, say something, or to do something, or to do something. If we don't, we're not aware of those 168 and their situation, and someone said they were homeless, not eating, not getting food, and all of that, maybe if we could get some idea of where and who these, live these 168 people, students are, maybe some of us would be willing to volunteer to go and see if we can meet some of those people, find out the situation, and do something.
Okay, I'll take one more question. Yes, please.
I would like to make a suggestion that rather than just having the police chief, the sheriff, the mayor, and the county magistrate, all of those, I think you need to involve the school system, especially the guidance counselors, so we can identify, if we can't identify these 168, we can identify maybe at-risk children. I think that's really important, involve the school system.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Some of you who are here, you're clearly interested. If you're interested, can we get a sign-up sheet so that people can leave their names, their phone numbers, their email addresses? Because we, this one meeting is not going to do it. We got Missy Harold who goes to the neighborhood prayer, there are a number of people here who are already doing things. We've got this young lady here working with Fanny Parker Club. So if we can get a sign-up sheet so that you all can know, so when things come up, you can say, "Shron, hey, Roger will call me in a heartbeat and say, 'Shron, I need you to do this.'" We've got people here willing to work, we all want to solve the problem. Can we get something on, get a sign-up sheet going so that somebody can coordinate and get something going?
Yes, ma'am, I'll be glad to send that around tonight. We'll have that before everyone leaves at the door.
Wait, basically, a comment. My name is Gloria Wadsworth, and I'm the president of Sisters of Strength. I have a 5'0" one seat chair. And my sisters, those young ladies, we do a lot in community that's unknown to a lot of people. And my thing is, with my organization, it's just hard with funds. You write grants, you get turned down, but we need money to help our organization to grow and be able to get funds to help our kids. My goal is to have a home for these kids who are homeless. I want a place to have these kids to come if they need a bed, sleep on, a kitchen, where they can learn how to cook and clean, those basic skills they need to survive and help these children find jobs. But I need money. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Eddie Roundtree, one of the needs to be claiming. I'm talking about one of the youngest ones that's still here, and I listen to all you guys, a lot of them, a lot of them make sense. Yeah, we do need volunteers and whatever else. I, myself personally, I volunteer for Thursday at middle school. And let me explain something to you guys, I have a teenager. It's a different breed. Oh, it's a different breed, all right? My daughter, that's my little cousin, my best friend. The worst thing you can go through is when your best friend call you crying because their child got shot. And I mean, we, we tight, we real tight. Like, I mean, that hurt me like my child. I've talked to King a couple of times, and I told him straight for that. I said, "Lord forbid, something happens to one of my kids, and they're not at fault, but burdened and tamed." And I mean it, and that's no disrespect to him, but I told him that I'm a man of the Lord, you know? I mean, every Thursday, we volunteer at this middle school, me and my friends. Their age bracket from 15 to 25, they lost. They lost. I mean, that's the bottom line. Now, my thing is, I'll be on that side of tracks, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I stand up here, business owner, whatever else, you know what I'm saying? I've been a boat ride of tracks. I can sit here, I can write a business plan, I can do whatever else. I'd have been in a jail cell, in prison time, whatever else, but you wouldn't think that until you sit down and talk to them. So I can talk to these kids on their level, and with a lot of y'all can't, they're not going to listen to y'all. You know what I'm just being honest with you? It's a lot of pastors that come in there and they want to mentor these kids and whatever else. You know the first thing? I'm not going to talk about, but one pastor, he said, well, he introduced himself and whatever else, and he said, "I'm a veteran, and I'm retired in this business." The kids first ask, "Well, have you killed anybody?" You're talking about 15, 16-year-olds. But the thing is, you have to talk to them on their level. I mean, yes, starts at home, but you got to talk to them on their level. You do. We can pray for them, that's, like, that's the main thing you have to pray for. I had a praying mother, my mother praised me, I still went to prison. I'm just being honest with you, I'm called a spade to spade. Am I ashamed of it? No. But that made me who I am today. I didn't come from a broken home, I didn't come from that side of tracks. I know better. But as they say, sometimes you got to let it rub your face where you see where it is. I'm going to be honest with you, I'm called a spade to spade, I don't care if you're offended, it is what it is. No, I'm serious. These kids, it's one of two, three, one of three things. They've gone to hell, to jail, or to a sale. Between that age of 17 to 25, because they lost. I mean, that's just what it is. We pray for them, we can do all the community events, whatever else, but I mean, I mean, a lot of these kids, some of the ones out here doing all this shooting, I mean, I know, whatever else. One or two of them went to me all day, wash clothes, whatever else, I go to them back and clean this freshman stuff, whatever else, to try to help them, to try to like, "Look, this is something better." But they don't get it. But the ones from this middle school, fall home, I mean, those boys you want to try to touch. Some of these high schools, I mean, when I go to high school and talk to these kids, I tell them, "Quit." The 11th tour break, these are the last two most critical years of your life, because once you go across that stage, if you don't got a game plan, the world will help you make one. But I mean, like, I mean, like I said, all you do is pray for them, but at the end of the day, I'm telling y'all, it's a different breed.
All right, thank you very much for being here, Jerry.
Sir, I want to say something. My name is Pat Smith. I came here because this town is where a lot of fur is completed. This is what I. My name is Pat. And because I need specifically to contact people like you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. If you take a look, you can see some of my students. It's ridiculous to this day and age that people have to pay to go to college. I put over 660 people to work in less than 10 years. And I have a degree in art, period. And was born blind. Now, there's no reason why this town can't be a shining star. But you white men, and as you notice, everybody on the dice is a man. You have no problems at all singing the national anthem. And when you sing "God Bless America," have you ever noticed that all of the thrown out in "God Bless America" are female? Women are the only ones that can stand the pain of giving birth. You don't even admit to the fact that Jesus in no way, shape, or form could ever have blonde hair and blue eyes and be foreign in Palestine. That's absurd. And then you talk about critical race theory? It's the facts, yeah. It's just the facts. I've been, because I live right near Valley Forge Park, and I saw the huts where the slaves that fought on the Union side were. But now down here, you guys want to scuff the building of a new school for a Boy Scout hut? And I know damn well in this town, this black Boy Scout didn't exist when that hut was first put there. It's about time you admitted to what it is that you're doing.